As a thriving community of nearly 5,000 people that continues to celebrate its past while embracing its future. And whereas Dexter's success and continued prosperity are built upon the collaborative spirit of its citizens, whose dedication to fostering a sense of community has helped shape its identi- identity as a welcoming and inclusive place for all. Whereas the Dexter Bicentennial Committee with the assistance of city staff and many community volunteers, worked tirelessly throughout the last two years to plan and execute the bicentennial celebration and other corresponding bicentennial events during 2024. The by- whereas the bicentennial committee was made up of 22 key community members. And it's important to get these names down, including Cheryl Willoughby, Beverly Hill, Michelle Paris, Rich Bellis, Lawrence Kloss, Thomas Morris, Laura Telesco, Jill Love, Julie Wilkinson, Lynette Schwarzenberger, Laura Fassett, Don Gilbert, Alexis Benson, Ella Markle, Quayla Riddle, Sanam Aldag, Anna Kavark, Ina Kuzlas, Heidi Patel, John Lasecki, Lynn Babcock, and Jacques Nero. Hope I didn't again, didn't miss anybody. If I have to, I'll edit this. Whereas the bicentennial committee was led by Cheryl Willoughby, whose deep passion for the Dexter community helps cement the bicentennial celebration into the history books through her rigorous planning and coordination between the city committees and community organizations to create many memorable activities. And whereas the Dexter Bicentennial Celebration was a historic success, hosting numerous events such as the Bicentennial Carnival, Catherine Dexter McCormick readings, performances by local musical groups, the bearing of a new time capsule at the Historical Society, and many other wonderful events hosted by the city businesses and community organizations. Whereas the Dexter Bicentennial Celebration will be remembered by generations of Dexter residents. It will be a milestone in Dexter's history as the community continues to welcome new residents and visitors to enjoy its quaint downtown, terrific parks, and intriguing history. Now therefore be it resolved that I as Mayor of City of Dexter to hereby thank the Dexter Bicentennial Committee for their incredible work to commemorate Dexter's 200th anniversary. Your efforts will be talked about for decades and has set a high mark, a high bar for future celebrations hosted by our community. Thank you all so much. Cheryl, I'd like to give this to you if I could. You can, we can, we can have copies made for everyone if that's what they would like. Um, let's start by, you read it, make sure I didn't miss anybody. Okay. And then we have to edit it to do that. You're very wonderful. It's been a great year. Thank you. And Josh?
We have a couple of items at the chair of the group. Uh, we have a bicentennial class that got produced. Uh, they'll hang here in City Hall and Cheryl will refer a proclamation from the State of Virginia.
So who's planning the next one?
Roland, her kid.
As always, you're welcome to stay for the meeting. We are down to item E on the agenda, which is non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone online? Josh, help me if you see a hand up. Use the raise hand feature. Not seeing any hands from here, but might be missing one. Okay, so we're reflecting. No non-arranged participation at this time. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest to declare? Excellent. We're down to approval of the agenda. We've got a long one.
Oh, good.
I'll second.
Move by tell. Second by Hubbard, thank you both. Any discussion on the agenda? Um, I would like to just ask that under uh, new business M7, that we officially accept the resignation, um, the exact submitted. It's sort of the first step in our process. So, um, when we get to that item, just remind me that we want to do that as part of that discussion. Okay, seeing no other comments, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Senator?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Tell?
Yeah.
Alden?
Yes.
You.
Yes, motion carries. All right, let's get into our first, uh, we have a public hearing, the first item, which, um, is an amendment to our general code of ordinances. Chapter 34, peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants. Uh, I'm going to open the public hearing to take comment on this item. Should there be any? Uh, there are two comments submitted by citizens in the packet that are attached to the information the council has. Essentially, the, the goal of this is to establish an opt-out uh, action or list that people can, um, sign up for so that when hawkers or peddlers come around, they'll get passed out this list and they'll basically be told, or to be against the law essentially to go up to those doors, unless it's a religious or, um, political visit. So I'll open the public hearing at, uh, 7:09. Is there anyone that has come out tonight to talk about this proposed change to our ordinance?
Uh, do you want me to fill a minute?
Yeah, why don't you fill a minute? Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, at, uh, the first meeting in December, I believe it was, the council set a public hearing, um, for tonight to consider amendment to the Peddler Solicitors and Transient Merchants Ordinance. Um, the amendments as proposed, like Sean said, um, would create a solicitation opt-out list. And, um, uh, our ordinance, uh, cannot apply to a variety of organizations, um, political organizations, citizen action groups, um, religious organizations, those sorts of things. So, um, those are automatically exempt. Um, but it, it does clarify, um, penalties for folks who, uh, go door to door without, uh, receiving a, um, permit first. And then for those who do commit and apply for a permit to go door to door, um, and our businesses and are, um, covered by our ordinance, uh, they would be subject to, um, the list that we would create um, from residents who are opting out of, of, um, folks going, going to their door, uh, for door-to-door merchants and transient merchants. Um, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I think it's a good summary of, of the amendments.
I thought the item was well laid out. Okay, seeing no, or last chance for public comment? Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll close the public hearing at, uh, 7:10. Thanks for filling the minute. Um, council has the option to consider the ordinance at this time as part of this item if, if we wish. Is there someone that would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Go for it.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, can I, can I accept the motion that's on page 10 of the packet, Ray?
Yep, please.
Just to consider amendments to the general code of ordinance, chapter 34, peddlers, solicitors, and transit. Yep, is that okay? Motion by tell.
I second.
Sanam, thank you for seconding. Second by Aldag. Council discussion? Sure.
The, it's up to the residents to petition, uh, opt out by providing a letter to the board.
Correct. So, um, we, we've, we've created a, um, a draft, uh, form that folks can fill out online. Um, and then folks can also, you know, send us an email, send us a, a letter and we can, we can add them to the list.
Oh, it's the kind of thing where people wish to opt out of their service.
Yeah. So, so when folks come in to apply for their, their permit, um, when they submit their application, um, they'll be provide, we'll simply just print off a copy of the list and hand it to them and say, you know, this is a copy of the, the opt-out list. Um, please don't visit these, these locations. And it should be, should be fairly straightforward.
How do we? Uh, we, uh, how do we enforce here? Enforcement will be in violation of the statute of the building of the city. How do you determine that? Is that a tissue issue? Can't issue by.
Uh, the, the, the residents would have to call the sheriff's office.
Would they also be able to call the city and demand an involvement?
So if, if, um, if someone has been applied or if someone has applied for, um, a permit, been issued a permit and then they visit one of the, one of the locations on the list, um, I think we, we, we would need additional, um, verification or some sort of additional evidence, um, for, for us to take action. Um, like a doorbell ring cam or, or something, um, because I mean, like, uh, Michelle isn't going to run out to that, that person's house and yeah, yeah.
So it would be typically up to the homeowner to address that violation.
Well, so, so they, they, they would report it, um, and to, to, to to the sheriff. If, if they called us, we would, we would tell them to, to call the sheriff, um, or, or we would contact the sheriff directly.
Is there? Is there any way we can provide some kind of detail with the state of the city of Dexter on there with a male peddler?
Uh, we, we, we can, we, we can, we can make, um, uh, no solicitor, um, door stickers available here at City Hall.
Yeah, but that would feel better if they had like a city of Dexter logo, trademark, or dot com, or whatever the show that is. In fact, Sonnich did not made on my machine in the back. Not that I could do it. Thank you.
Wow, I actually think that's a really good point, Ray, because people already have those signs up. And, you know, it's, they get, they get honored or they get ignored, but if we do file a complaint, if a person does file like that they want off that list with the city, an official seal or logo may help actually cut down on the knocking of doors. I mean, there are a number of people in this community, myself included, who have various safety issues with random people knocking on their doors. Um, I'm lucky to have a very vocal dog. However, every time someone knocks on my door, I'm like, please don't. And so I think that the more official we can make it, the better. And then my other question is, um, so the only way is to come in here and do something? There's no over the phone way or online way, or there's no way to set that up to opt out? At least not right now?
So.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I missed that. I was reading something.
So, so, so we, we, we have a, um, we've established a draft electronic form.
Okay, all right. Sorry. I totally just missed that sitting here.
Yeah, no, that's okay. And then, um, if, if folks, um, either send us a letter or send us an email, we, we can add them.
All right, great. All right, thank you.
But, but then it isn't coming upon the resident to
No, go ahead.
Uh, will manage themselves if they want off the list or, um, if they sell or move.
Or want back on the list.
Or want back on the list.
Okay.
Any further questions? Please call the vote to approve the amendment to the general code of ordinances.
Alden?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Farah?
Yes.
Tell?
Yeah.
You.
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move down the agenda to item I. I1 is our upcoming meeting list. Um, we'll have to review the, uh, the list for any meetings that Zach's been recovering. Um, he's part of the DAFD still, and he'll be attending this week's meeting, I believe. Um, but as we get into our goal setting, we'll figure out if people want to take that spot or switch that around. But for now, I wasn't planning to do anything. I've, I've tried to talk to him. I haven't been able to communicate with him directly. So, um, I'm planning to see him Thursday. Does anybody have any comments on the meeting calendar?
Have you found anybody for?
Not yet.
The water?
Not yet, but.
Yeah.
Sanam has volunteered to do it if nobody else will.
I also see my name still on there and maybe Sanam, you and I can have a conversation about that offline. Are we talking about your own river watershed council? Yeah, um.
She's expressed that she do.
And I've acknowledged that I'm, I'm acknowledging right now that I'm still on that list and there is an upcoming meeting. So.
I just feel a little bit. Or board for us to be on.
It is, absolutely.
We're working to get it covered.
Well, in case they have a grant.
The other communication in the packet is the annual giving letter from Carla Wartman. Like to thank them for sharing that with us and for doing that on behalf of all the clients that they represent. Anybody have comments on either of the two communications? Okay, we'll keep this moving. Our first report this evening is from our public services superintendent. Welcome, Tim. How are you? Good, and you?
Good. Um, I've got a three-week report this night. It'll take some questions to get named and then I got a couple of.
What?
It's not a question. I would just like to say thanks for getting the ice rink out and I think I've seen more people using it this season than I have in the last number of years. I, I, people are posting online. I know people are enjoying it. Um, so thank you.
And knock on wood, it's supposed to be cold for a lot of January, so.
Oh, good.
Hopefully it'll, hopefully it'll stay open.
Certainly helps. Hey, Tim, I was wondering, um, you know how you give the average water use for the week? Would it be possible once a month to report what the average daily flow at the waste water treatment plant is for the month?
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be the first or the second, whatever, whenever it fits in.
What, the average day, daily flow?
Yeah. Yeah, yes, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, questions?
Can you explain to me the average water use for, I noticed that millions gallons per day and then there's a difference between 1223 and 1229, even though was there less used?
No, so what I do is I do an average between the whole week. So I put together how much we use that week and divide it by seven. It'll give you an average daily uses.
Oh, that's average gallon?
Yeah.
All right. So, you know, usually it's oh, and, uh, how much cold pack did you guys have to last year? Were we really that bad that we need to start putting cold packs out? I know.
Couple of spots that were, yeah. There's a couple of spots that we had, um, we were running low, so I had to go pick some up and then, uh, they knocked a couple of spots out that were getting there, long as behind the bank. Excuse me.
Is it okay to put on like, uh, Dexter and Ever? Do you have any luck?
Yeah, we have some. So I can, I mean, yeah, I can have them go out and take a look.
There's a big hole out this big, uh, Dexter and Ever by Metaview. By the light there. It just, it started out as little and I go by it every day and now it's getting, now it's getting to the point where I can feel it with my tire. So.
Okay.
You gotta bridge it.
Well. Hopefully I'm not the only one who noticed this, you know? But five thousand cars a day go up your town.
Any other comments on the written report? Tim, floor is still yours?
Um.
For updates?
Yeah, I wanted to say that we did open the ice rink. It is open. Justin's correct. There's going to be a little warm-up this week for two days, but it's nothing major. And then we got a huge cold spell going again, so I think it should be open for quite a while. And it seems like she said on Facebook, that's friends of Dexter seem to be, seem to be liking it. Um.
Do we stand there?
Yeah, well, we have, we have a, uh, we had the water to come. And then, uh, we just maintain it throughout here.
And restore it, that's our.
Uh, we have the ice festival happening this weekend. That'll take care of. Um, we got done, Burmese did their tree trimming for the contract. Uh, they came back and had to do about five or six different spots that, uh, we wanted to do more on. They did a really good job of really happy, especially with the alleys. And, uh, I'm hoping to get some, uh, of the local subs down through the P W tree trim. So if that started to, so we don't take out mirrors again.
Great.
So. But I think, yeah, that was it.
Great.
Well, that's.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you guys were going through the, um, roadwork, um, scheduled this year and they did the industrial part. Initially, I wasn't very appropriate, you know, saying a little bit, but actually it looks really good now. So I think I may have underestimated your account right here.
Well, they just put it this way, they were the only.
I was aware of that.
So.
Uh, the freighter.
Yeah, so, um.
Every day, it's out every day.
And, and we're also waiting for them to, to ask us for payment. But they're, they're, we've been reaching out to them over and over and they're not sending us an invoice.
Wait, okay. Unusual.
See if they want to come back for another year.
The only time you want to finish that part.
Okay, Tim, I think we're all good. Thanks a lot for being here this evening. Next up is our community development managers. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine. How's council this evening?
Good.
How's council this?
We're fine.
Okay, you've got my report in front of you. And before I go into my extensive verbal updates, that's a joke. Um, let me know what comments or questions you've got.
Right.
So can we pull back their revised site plan?
Yes, sir. They pulled their final site plan so that they could make some tweaks to it, um, to address the comments in our review letters. And, um, that includes they're going to be providing fire suppression for all of the buildings. Two of them we knew were required. The other three, they decided to, um, and they have, they, we did receive the revised site plan and it will be on the planning commission's February 3rd agenda.
Okay, so later that responds to our, um, you and the fire department that's planning.
At the planning commission and yeah.
Uh, what about Baker Road?
So we've gotten a complaint from a business, uh, regarding enforcement of the two-hour parking permit. There is a sign, um, but there's some questions regarding is there TCOs? Is having two-hour parking really, um, the best way of managing parking on Baker Road? Um, so I am working with, um, city engineer and city managers to figure out how best to arrest this.
I know we went through it down on Main Street as well. From the street serving in the.
Yeah, I, I think that's going to be a, be a discussion topic during our goals and objectives session is, um, what we want to do and, and whether and how we want to enforce.
All right, these are all not updated since last report, so I've already seen all of them. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else have questions for Ray? Or for Ray?
Okay.
So.
For my updates, the final site plan and engineering plan for the Pelham was stamped approved, uh, last week. Um, the development agreement has been executed and, uh, it was more than likely recorded today along with their condominium documents. So their next step will be zoning compliance. Excuse me, a right-of-way permit, um, uh, those types of things so that they can start the work, um, the water main extension. Grandview Commons, um, um, has requested, or the developer for Grandview Commons has requested that the city accept the infrastructure improvements, um, per the planned unit development agreement. The, um, the developer has the ability to request the city accept the infrastructure improvements and the city will accept them, um, after completion of each phase. Um, only phase one is currently completed, um, um, but Mr. Brower would like all of the infrastructure, um, accepted. And so currently what we're doing is working through, this would be something, um, that we haven't done. Usually acceptance of public infrastructure or infrastructure improvements that become the city's, is something done at the end of the project. Probably is reasonable. Elder doesn't want to be responsible for any, um, anything that goes bad when it's in construction and other just the city. Um, but we're working through that process. Um, I have talked to city attorney myself. I've provided a, um, a process for, um, uh, Mr. Brower and he's currently looking at it. And in the meantime, uh, superintendent of public services and O H M are conducting their inspections and, um, the various items that need to be taken care of, um, to develop a punch list so that when we come forward in front of you, we're able to make a sound recommendation, one way or the other.
Is Mr. Brown statewide in the bus thing?
No, sir. Other than the infrastructure's been in for a long time.
How does this benefit me? I'm a good guy.
The, the we have to consider the infrastructure improvements that are in phase one because it's complete, because that's what's in the planned unit development agreement.
Correct.
Um, but part of the, what we've done as part of this process for considering it is made it very clear that there's a two-year maintenance and guarantee bond that's required, that always is. But because there is still ongoing construction and we don't know when that would end, a performance guarantee would have to be provided. So that will cover us in the event that this, that we get to a point where, um, um, we can present it to council and council wants to move forward. But wait, if something should happen during construction, there's a performance bond or guarantee to ensure this.
Yeah, I'm all about following the debt, so I find it's a plus. A little out of my comfort zone. We have it in steps specifically for certain reasons.
I'm sorry?
We have it in steps for reasons.
Correct.
And you really have got to put a foot on it by now. And if I could be provided with a reason, maybe I could be more sympathetic.
Ray, let's, let's let, let's let the staff work through.
Fine.
Issue what they're requesting.
I figured. Okay.
Michelle?
Yes.
I'm sorry, when you say infrastructure, which are you, what are you referring to specifically?
So, per the way the, um, infrastructure improvements as it's defined in the P U D agreement, are those improvements to public water, public sanitary sewer, public storm water, asphalt pavement, curb and gutter, and concrete sidewalk? And also the road portion of on-street parking for Grandview, which are located in Baker Road and the Grand Street Public Rights of Way for the project, as well as any onsite public water, sanitary, and storm sewer. And it's all shown on the exhibit B. So you're talking about water, that water mains, sewer mains, storm sewers. You're talking about the on-street parking improvements that were made on Grant. Um, you're talking about public sidewalks, et cetera.
So, but not the interior driveways?
The interior drive aisles?
Yeah.
Are private.
Are private. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
How far along are we? This is phase one of it.
So they have, they are completely constructed and done in phase one. They have, they are constructing in phase two and three. Um, there are three buildings that, um, have yet to be, um, started construction.
Did we have a maintenance issue down there? Did we have to go on plug and plug?
We had a couple of things, but not the major, they took care of themselves. So. So they showed the binary report, but they, they have a. Fully rights of those decisions in a small, in, in, in one and just.
Oh, I thought I thought something.
We had a cat in a storm drain.
Okay.
We had a cat in a storm drain.
You mean the one that Courtney rescued?
Yes.
I remember. There's a lot of things that end up in this.
Okay, so what you're giving us a heads up that that's likely coming back to us in your, in your report and/or as an item.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Um, third, okay. Second Street Workshop is part of the housing readiness amendment to the master plan. We have a tentative date of February 22nd. I noticed in your packet that that's one of the dates, Mr. Mayor, that you have proposed for the, um, for a budget workshop. Um, um, I can work with, uh, Justin and, and you on dates to.
We can move things around.
Okay, thanks. Um, we haven't yet taken that to the planning commission. We're planning on doing that for the February meeting with all of the documentation we go with. So.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last thing is this Saturday, the Western Western Washington Housing Solution Conference is taking place in Chelsea. This is something that staff, both myself and Jenna are participating in. Will bring back information. It it's all designed to try and find ways of getting more housing into our communities, not just affordable, but the attainable. Market rate doesn't seem to have a difficulty making its way in, so we're really focusing on the affordable, but but more importantly, the attainable.
Well, it's allowed to. Interact with what the state legislature is not about the master plan.
Yes.
About outside area.
Yes, yes, plenty outside boundaries. Yep, which we will get into more on the item later on. And that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you for all the verbal updates. Okay, I believe we have a couple of representatives from the sheriff's office here this evening. Dustin, you invited them to the meeting, right?
I sure did. Looks like Sergeant Nick Krings is coming to the podium on on their behalf.
Sergeant, how are you?
Good evening, how are you guys?
Very good, Neil?
Good. Uh, I know this meeting is long, so we'll keep it short. I just wanted to take some time as a face to your who I haven't seen. Uh, like Mayor said, I'm Sergeant Krings. I am the sergeant who is assigned to the Dexter collaboration for. The foreseeable future at this time. Been here for about. Four years now. Informally and formally. It's a three year assignment. I'm in here too, so. I will be the face for the sheriff's office in this area. Should anything come up? Uh, if you have any questions, bio means I'll put my phone number out there. You can give me a call anytime, day or night. I'm saying I'm gonna answer, but I'll give you my number.
Yep, card.
I do. I will handle see before I go. The only thing I want to cover quick before I. Get to my colleagues here is just covering a few stats. I just wanted to go over the twenty twenty four year end stats while we're here. Uh, compared to. Twenty twenty three. Uh, overall cost per service. Were up about seven percent, so not a significant increase. Uh, we did have. Probably a hundred percent increase in drunk driving arrests in the city.
What does that by numbers? One to two, two to four?
Forty eight. Yep, eight in twenty twenty four compared to four in twenty twenty three. Assault of crimes were up twenty seven percent. Home invasions were down seventy five percent, only one occurring in twenty twenty four. And vehicle thefts were also down. Uh, sixty percent, only two for the entire year. Or two, five in twenty twenty three. Traffic crashes remained about the same. One less. And. The only other thing we'll cover. Traffic stops and citations. Traffic stops were up six percent. In twenty twenty four and citations went up eighty five percent. Uh, one hundred and seventy four being issued for the year compared to ninety four in twenty twenty three. Uh, I will caveat that by saying that for the month of December. Traffic stops were down seventy seven percent. That's something we've seen throughout the county. Especially in the colder months. Uh, that is all I wanted to cover. If anybody has any questions directly for me. Yes, ma'am.
I I have a. Two questions, well, three questions. First of all, uh, with the drunk driving thing, I mean, I know that's not. A huge. Actual number of increases, but I'm just wondering, is that something you guys have been targeting more or people just been? More completely out of control?
Uh, I would say that over the past year, we've had a. A younger. Staff come through the area or. Uh, eager. Eager and more trained. Uh, and they can use they get a lot more training on drunk driving and drunk driving. They're more tuned to look for it, investigate it, so. Uh, I don't think anybody. Spent twenty twenty four just in a drunken rage. I think we're just. Out there checking for.
Getting, yes, okay, great. I guess this isn't a question. I just want to say in terms of the citation to. Pull over ratio, I know that's something that we have sort of asked you about for a number of years, so. Um, as much as I hate to say it, it's nice to hear that that's up. So thank you for for listening. And then my last question is. I know you guys expressed that you were. I don't know what the word is to put on it, excited, happy, or like at least an approval of moving over there. How has settling in over there at least temporarily been for you? Do you have any things that right now we can help you with in in terms of making it better and just? Hopefully, you know, once it gets permanent, I hope you guys are still looking forward to being there.
Yeah, so currently we are, we're not over there.
Oh.
Uh, we have two offices upstairs.
Okay, well, that's still over there. Over there. Okay, okay. Well, in this building, in this general vicinity geographically, I guess.
We'll be over there once we get the first.
Sorry.
Great for me because I have my own personal office.
Yeah.
That being said, the majority of our staff are coming out of our side of township station currently. Uh, they check in, check out of there. That's where all our vehicles are being have. We're using this space primarily just to write reports. Not necessarily. You know, as a hangout spot for today or anything, we want to keep them on the road. So our. Road staff haven't spent a whole lot of time here. Like I said, works out great for me. Close proximity to Justin and the rest of the staff, so we can communicate on some issues that are going on, but. Right now, everything's going great. Uh. If we could do the transition tomorrow, I'd love that. I don't think we're gonna make that happen anytime soon, so.
Well, excuse my, I guess ignorance, something I should be very well versed on. But I'm happy to hear that so far, at least the temporary stuff's working well for you and that you are still looking forward to moving over there.
Yeah, I I think all of our staff are looking forward to having a dedicated station here, not. Fires here to. We just move us. Separating from them is is a good thing for everybody.
Oh.
Well, I'm sure that the that the staff over there. No, no, I'm sure that the staff over there is, you know, yeah, your your time over there seems like you have. You're doing great, but if there's ever anything in this temporary period that the staff is not able to address, which I'm sure is like very miniscule, please let us know.
Absolutely.
We're here to help you.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Yeah.
I do want to.
You got questions, Ray?
I I just wanted to thank you for your. Uptick in. Incidents that are traffic stops. Because. We have a lot of traffic come through town and none of it's from town.
I would agree.
Uh, so really. It really bothers me when people come flying down fifth or down second or down Hudson, cutting through town and. It's not the easiest. Town to get through either with the schools and any industrial park and. All the traffic trying to hit the highway and everybody coming from out north, so. I think if our outlying neighbors are more aware that. We are willing to enforce. That would definitely show a. An improvement in driver courtesy from our neighbors.
Absolutely. And the and the Baker Road construction caused a lot of issues on the side streets.
Well, there's off. Wait till they do Main Street.
Yeah.
By they, you mean the County Road Commission? You talking about the roundabout?
All of it.
I'm just trying to clarify, that's not us.
The 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 roundabout isn't us, but.
That's what I mean.
But the 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 but 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 there there is a an overlay project on Main Street.
You you know, I'm sorry. All right, I'll be quiet.
Now, don't make promises that. Keep over there. The side of the table is my problem side. All right, no, just kidding.
We're the council. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Commander Lo.
Okay. So for those of you guys that don't know me, Lieutenant Hunt, I'm the West Ops Lieutenant for the Sheriff's Office, so I handle all police services, operations west of twenty three, which includes the Dexter Collaboration, Manchester Lordy Collaboration, and South Township. So my office is out of Seattle, just like Sergeant Krings, I'm available to you guys pretty much twenty four seven. I will generally almost always answer my phone. Uh, because my wife will stick me in the ridge at the middle of the night if I don't quickly, so. Uh, but no, if you if you ever need me, I'll get you guys my card that don't have it and I'm always available to you guys. Uh, though.
You may regret saying that.
That's all right. It's all good. I I retire in five months, then at that point.
Five months, look at this.
But no. So obviously, the biggest kind of news for the sheriff's office is new sheriff to Sheriff Thiers now in office, and so she's running the show up at in our admin. And working on a few things up there. Our biggest issue overall at Sheriff's Department, as it has been for years, has always been staffing and that kind of leads into all of our challenges. Would you have a couple vacancies still here in the Dexter Collaboration? Uh, if you look on the report there, we're just talking about bank dollars, with bank dollars are generated due to vacancies, which are either generated from. Actual vacant positions that we don't have filled or people on long term leave. Uh, that are working out of the collaboration here in Dexter. And so, uh, last year was pretty challenging staffing wise, and you guys have a lot of bank dollars left over, so. Address that at the end of the year with you guys, since you paid for those services and we did not provide the bodies to take care of that completely. Uh, hopefully this year, that's one of the priorities with the new administration is to get staffing up. Commander Lo can talk about that a little bit. But once we hopefully, you know, we get staffing in order, we can. Do more for Dexter and the the make more stops and do all the various things, kind of take care of things a little bit more proactively and just responding to calls for service right now. So there are a couple of new changes that uh will probably be taking place as far as. Uh, staffing and how we operate with our staff and vehicle fleet management, all that kind of stuff with the new administration. But actually being a small collaboration, it may not impact you guys as much as some of the other areas that we work in. So, uh, anybody have any questions for me before I turn it over to our new commander, Lo?
Can we get a refund?
Yeah, basically the book could cut you a check. At least by understanding what they've done in the past, hundred percent, honestly, so, yeah. You paid for the services.
Yeah.
By understanding it's when there's a surplus of bank dollars like there is right now, you'll get a check again at some point beginning of the year here, so.
How many officers do we contract for? Three and a sergeant?
Eight. The sergeant is. You just get the sergeant.
So just in our contract right here. We go ahead.
Yeah, we 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 I believe it's three PSUs and then a half of the. Half the school. A a a a full officer, we split half of the school.
Okay, so you guys paid for three, but because you have the collaboration.
Right.
We have eight within the collaboration.
Which is.
You guys are specifically paying for three and a half.
Right.
And so you get the extra guy during this, like the school resource officer becomes a day shift. Deputy for you guys primarily here in the city. Uh, during the summer months when school is out. But because you're sharing resources with Dexter Town, Western Town.
Right.
There's a total of eight within the collaboration, minimum generally one to two, depending on times, times of year. Are will be working at any one time upwards, if we're at full staff, people are filling all the shifts, you could have upwards of three work. So.
Was it the easier for the sheriff department if we collaborated with SIA? Also? Or is that gonna be? Those are too difficult.
No, it's not. It's something that could be done, but again, that's something.
Is there is there cost savings? I don't I don't know if it's. By bringing in.
SIA has significantly more runs than you do.
Well, more population.
Significantly more calls for service. It's a bigger discussion, I think.
It was just a matter of time before. They're gonna equal out, I believe. As the population encourages.
But they they also contract for eight deputies. But they are significantly busier than you guys are, and we do back each other up back and forth to see if something's going on up here where we need another deputy, we'll pull a SIA car up here. Same thing, the Dexter car will run down to SIA and help out when we need to. Try to keep people in their areas as much as possible.
Yeah, I think what Lieutenant Hunt is trying to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we were to partner with SIA, we would be a donor.
Most likely.
I don't want to hear that.
But I think you're probably better off where you're at right now.
Good to know.
Uh, any other specific questions for me before I turn it over to Commander Lo, we can talk about a little more big picture stuff for you guys?
Good to see you.
It was good to see you guys.
Thank you.
Like I mentioned, I will be retiring this year, so mid-June is what my target dates are. Been up here for five years as lieutenant or four and a half, five years for lieutenant and a couple of years as the sergeant in Dexter, so I've enjoyed my time with you guys and.
How many years total?
Twenty five.
Congratulations.
finishing up twenty five.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Getting down to it. So at that point, there will be, you'll have another West Ops Lieutenant halfway through the year. Uh, we've got a bunch of really good qualified people that I'm sure we'll put in, and I'm sure things will be right there at the top of that list, so. You may you may see him for much longer, so.
Sounds good.
Good to see you.
Don't forget your card.
Excellent, Tom. Uh, Board, my name is Gary Lowell. And a month ago, I was your day shift deputy. I worked here for four years, been a law enforcement officer for twenty five years. So I'm very well aware of the staffing shortages they talked about. It's, uh. I think. The lowest I've seen in my career. Um, it is a challenge all over the place, but it's something the sheriff is. Kind of making priority one. Uh, the sheriff was going to be here tonight, but something came up she cannot be. She's gonna make a point to try to attend. As many meetings as she can, try to get some face to face time with you all. Um, and other township officials and city officials. Um, that's that's really the hardest thing we're facing right now is the staffing, but we've made some significant. Headway into streamlining our process. Um, and some other creative ways with marketing, things like that, so we are very hopeful. Um, I think it was day four for me. I sat in on twenty one interviews that they've been waiting for two months to get interviewed. Um, so, you know, we're already making some headway there. Yeah. So and I don't have any business cards yet. I've been asking every day for the new business cards and we do not have.
Really, it's the leader guy?
As soon as I get them, but, um, you know, I I know Justin pretty well and, you know, I I'm I'm pretty easily accessible, so. You have any questions for me?
No, but good luck in your new position.
See any developing trends out here? Developing trends I need to be aware of?
Developing trends.
Meth labs popping up? Anything excessive speeding, hot rides, D and Es?
You know, I think the biggest thing that I saw last year. You know, we had a lot of vehicle break ins.
Right.
Um, you know, that seemed to be, but looking at the numbers, it was pretty consistent the last couple of years.
I believe that was one individual, but I can't prove that.
Yeah, we've. I worked, I worked a lot on a lot of those cases and there were some challenges there. And there's actually some stuff at the prosecutor's office right now on those cases. So, you know, those are kind of the, that was kind of the biggest thing that I think we faced last year. Uh, and we'd have different rings. We had a ring from Detroit. Uh, that we suspect was from Detroit. Chelsea got hit as well. That was a couple of weekends. Um, last year, so. Well, that seemed to be the biggest trend, more traffic, I think. Uh, I think we've seen after COVID. I've talked with this with our traffic guys because we have had a lot of discussions about traffic. Because every township in every city has that exact concern, trust me. And we talked about COVID and how everybody was off the road, and then as we slowly got back on the road, we were a little more ambitious as our speed and things like that. And I think we're seeing that, you know, the traffic has increased people's. Thinking that the road is clear, it's not. So and there's that, there actually is like some research being done out there on that, but. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks for taking the time to be here tonight.
You're very welcome.
See you again soon. Be safe. Okay, um, does anybody have anything from any of the? Board of Commissions that are not bolded on the agenda? Then we will go down to your report. Dustin?
Sure.
Please.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just just a couple of items. Um, we, uh, we've opened up. Registration for the Paint Dexter Planar Festival. And I think registrations are rolling in. We did receive a formal notification that we were awarded the four hundred thousand dollars for the Mill Creek Park Playground. Um, and we started a discussion with Smith Group on getting a proposal to assist us in that that effort. The lighting under the Main Street Bridge, you should now see lights under the Main Street Bridge. Um, that project is is substantially complete. Um, that project is, is substantially complete. Um, we are gonna have a little bit more staff turnover, um, we are partnering with our, uh, finance director on deck. Um, and also received, uh, a notice that our administrative assistant, um, both those positions are new, uh, or are the people in them, uh, you know, last six months. But, um, our administrative assistant accepted another position as well, so, um, you know, we're, we'll be working to, to fill those here pretty quick. Um, and then, uh, we a- a- as part, y- you'll, you'll hear more about this later, but, um, we did get, um, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars through our small urban, uh, federal allocation. Um, but as a part of those meetings, uh, there, there was an additional twenty-five thousand dollars that was requested by WAVE. And there were a couple of ways that we could go about, um, working with them in assigning them twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, one direction and, and their preferred direction is, um, to adjust our contract with them. Um, to essentially um, up our contribution to them, so we would be essentially the recipient of the federal dollars and then pass them through to, to WAVE. Um, but I wanted to, to, to let everybody know that, that that's something that's in discussion and it might be coming before you here in a little bit. Um, does anybody have any questions for me?
Was that a new procedure?
So, uh, the small urban program is something that is new to us. Um, so you, you, before you might have heard of, uh, the Transportation Improvements Program or TIP.
Yeah.
Um, which is, has been our normal program for receiving federal road dollars. Um, because our census tract has, uh, exceed, now exceeded five thousand people. Um, we've been moved into a new category, uh, within, um, um, Watts. And so we're now eligible for a new pot of money, which is, um, the small urban program. And so rather than receiving about three hundred thousand dollars through Watts every three years, um, we should be getting somewhere between three hundred and six, or three hundred fifty and three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars every two years. Um, but as a part of that, we, we're, we're one of three organizations that sit in our, um, small urban program committee. Uh, the other two being WAVE and, uh, the Road Commission. Um, the Road Commission doesn't really have much of a presence in, in the city, so generally they go along with whatever the other two agree with. Um, so for the most part, we are going to get a bulk of that allocation, but because WAVE is another partner in that, in that committee, um, they're gonna, they're gonna have some requests as well and.
So what are we acting like the fiduciary for?
E- e- essentially, we, we would act as a pass-through for, for their allocation.
And that part's new.
And that part's new.
Other questions for Justin?
Um,
Ray?
What's going on with, uh, Kingsley for, we, they done their well reports or we got anything or?
I, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't heard, I haven't heard much in the last couple of weeks, but, um, um, you know, with, with the holidays, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect much. Um, they, they were supposed to have been working on their, uh, well investigation at the tail end of December. Um.
Yeah, I remember they couldn't fulfill the obligation because they didn't have all of the, like, they required or something.
Yeah, so, so I, I, I think they're, they're still working to, to, to finalize their, their well investigation and I think the plan is for them to come back, um, to council with whatever they find when their, when their report is complete.
And that's just for?
The forty-five acres, yeah.
Good. Okay, seeing no further questions. Uh, I submitted a written report in the packet. Um, I wasn't aware that the twenty-second of February that I was proposing conflicted with the Second Street, so I guess I'll ask um, this February fifteenth, the week prior work. As a potential, why don't you just look at it, I'd like to set those soon, I'm gonna consider the March twenty-second one set. Since nobody's stated a conflict with that one yet.
Whatever you got there, bud, it's fine.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll plan on them, you're, you're gonna.
John?
I, I, I.
I know Marie can't make March eighth, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, or February eighth, so.
Yeah.
Correct, I can't make the, I can't make the early meetings.
Right, the, the two on the eighth, I know you couldn't.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have a hard, hard stop at, at noon, but.
Okay, alright.
Fifteenth of February.
I threw out four dates, yeah, the only one, the only conflict I heard was from Marie and she couldn't make the two that were on the eighth, so. They're posted it, so. Alright, we'll consider the fifteenth and March twenty-second then. Um, I'd like to ask, are there any council member reports? Then we are down to the consent agenda where there are six items.
Okay. I move we approve the six consideration items on the consent agenda, one bills and payroll in the amount of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Two, proposal from Ramer to perform preventative maintenance on high service pump and well number four for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Three, setting dates for border reviews, twenty-twenty-five, March, July and December meetings. Four, resolution to set twenty-twenty-five hardship exemption guidelines. Five, auction of equipment and six, request to close Central Street from January seventeenth. That should say twenty-twenty-five, I'm assuming. Through January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five for Dexter's Ice Fest. My second?
Second by Alda, thank you. Okay, please call the vote to approve the consent agenda.
Alda?
Yes.
Tal?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Is that my fair on?
Yes.
Yo.
Yes, motion is approved. We are down to unfinished business, item L-one is consideration of our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-eight transportation asset management plan. Someone would like to move it for the purpose of, at least. Can move by Tal, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Summer Farrow, thanks Joe. Justin?
Sure, so.
Second time we've seen it.
Yeah, th- th- this was held over from, uh, the December thirteenth meeting, um, it's substantially in the same uh, shape and form that you saw it at, on the December thirteenth meeting. Um, the Road Committee did meet, uh, to talk about, um, the upcoming road projects or proposed projects and the TAM. Um, I don't know if, uh, I, I know Dan's not here, but if Joe, you have any, any um, feedback from, from that meeting that you want to share?
No, it was a, it was a good meeting, it was, um, it was a good opportunity for Dan and myself to ask some, uh, more questions about, um, I mean, not so much specifically how, but, uh, the, you know, the big picture about how the plan was, how the projects were grouped and and then we also got into some of, um, what I'd call it, non-quantitative things, you know, things that residents would say, hey, what about this or what about that, that may not just show up in the paper. Um, so we talked about those, we talked a lot about how the, uh, projects are grouped. Just sort of going through the whole thing and, uh, uh, to get a better feel for it. Um, I think it was a good, uh, discussion. Um, I'm hoping that, um, in the future, we can sort of be on the front end of it to give some of that feedback and stuff for it to be incorporated, but I, I apologize, I didn't talk to Dan, um, over the weekend, but, um, I, I don't think that either he or I had any issues with, um, the plan as it was being presented or, uh, the timelines that we're talking about for a week.
Yeah, and, um, you know, one of the things that we talked about is that, um, you know, this is the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight plan. The plan is to bring this back every year, um, as we, you know, add a new year. Um, but this is something that we're gonna evaluate and come back to every year. Um, as things change, as roads change, as funding changes, um, the, the goal is to adapt the plan accordingly. Um, and so, uh, during the, the meeting, you know, Joe and Dan indicated that, um, you know, they'd like to, to have a more in-depth discussion earlier in the year. Um, as we're working to, to update the plan, um, and I think that's something that we can.
What, what is your deadline to accept every year?
So that there really isn't a hard deadline to accept, um, the.
Would you like to have your meeting earlier in the year?
Well, s- so, so, so ideally we'll, we'll have the plan adopted in fall.
Okay.
Um, so that way we can get, get, get a jump on, um, the, the bid documents, g- getting the, getting the, the projects bid and getting them awarded. So that, um, you know, we're ready to go and get good bids early in the year. Um, so, you know, if, if we had a discussion, you know, spring, summer, um, you know, that would be a good time.
Is it something Streets Committee can do or would it require the full council or a combination?
I mean, I, you know, I think, uh, if, if we.
It's our priority, right?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
It's, it's the type of thing, if we think that something can, that the committee needs to work on, we can send it to committee. Um, I don't, I generally think things should start at this table and if we want it to go to committee, we send it to committee.
Hmm.
That gives us all a chance to weigh in and then the committee can wrestle with whatever the questions are of council.
Hmm.
But we've, we've, we've made a huge investment in our roads over the last twenty years and we continue to do that, I think, pretty well. Uh, what did you say in the packet, was it twenty-five percent of the network was touched last year?
Mm-hmm.
Through one treatment or another, that's quite an impressive statistic when you think about it. I know that doesn't mean they're all rebuilt, but whether it's preventative maintenance of some type, resurfacing.
Mm-hmm.
Seal coating, whatever you want to say, it's an impressive statistic. The president should see the results of their tax dollar getting spent there for sure.
Yeah, and then I, I don't think that statistic includes the, um, the crack sealing program that we do, that's just the the major roads that were touched either through, uh, microsurface, lorry seal, mill and overlay and reconstruction.
Okay, so we have a motion by Tal, seconded by Summer Farrow, to, uh, approve the transportation asset management plan, is it okay if I call the vote? Please call the roll, the vote.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Is that my fair on?
Yes.
Tal?
Yes.
Alda?
Yes.
Yo.
Yes, motion carries, thank you for your work on that, Marcus, thank you for your work on that. Uh, we're down to new business, um, new business item M-one is discussion of the historical signage recommendation from our Arts Culture and Heritage Committee. Just more discussion of historical markers.
So I'll, I'll hand it over to, to Josh as the, as the, uh, staff liaison to the Arts Culture Heritage Committee and I see Bev, Bev Hill in, uh, in the audience who.
Please come up, Bev.
Who, uh, submitted the, the proposal that's in, included in your packet and, uh, between the two of them, they can bring us up to speed.
So I'll kind of touch base on the, the memo that I have for you, starting on page eighty-five, I'll let Bev kind of tell her proposal. Um, but as council knows, um, uh, council had asked the Arts Culture Heritage Committee, um, to kind of investigate, uh, originally kind of the historical marker programs in the state of Michigan. Um, we looked at that as well as a proposal that's been brought to us by the, uh, Historical Society, which is more of a glass historical signage. Um, we covered those two different things and I, like I said, on page eighty-five, I kind of broke down the differences between the two. Um, historical markers based from the state of Michigan, I include some costs in there between two to five thousand for those, uh, markers. And those are more, um, kind of regulated markers that we do through the Michigan Historical Center. Uh, the other one are these glasses global signs, uh, which is secrecy on page eighty-six, an example of one down by the farmer's market in Ann Arbor. Um, those signs are more, uh, less restrictive and those would be done through a private third-party vendor, um, ranging between seven to ten thousand. Um, and those signs we could do on more variety of topics, um, the historical markers would be on historical sites in those things within town. Some examples would be thirty-five fifteen, especially mine in the park, some older sites within the city. Uh, and then the historical glass signage would be more, uh, broader topics, so I know that one of the projects kind of brought forward, one of the proposed locations would be all the old wooden road downtown, so we have some more broad, uh, capabilities of, of, uh, kind of telling Dexter history there. Um, so I had, um, Arts Culture Heritage discuss that over a few meetings, um, they brought back the, uh, motion that's on page eighty-six. Um, and I can answer any question, additional questions, I've attached some of the pieces of information that have been brought to council before, some of the rehabilitation standards through the Department of the Interior, which applies to the state markers, uh, as well as some cost aspects to that, um, as well as, on page eighty-seven is the proposal from the Historical Society, which I will let Bev kind of explain more on that one.
Welcome.
Yes, um, this is Jan Weaver and Carol Burke, we're on the Historical Society Board and we have, uh, complete support from the Historical Society. So this is a proposal. Um, and when you look through there, we will, we have given ideas, but we feel that once we get started on that, it should be a committee uh, with different branches, the chamber, hopefully, one of you or two of you would be on that. So we want to spend a lot of time researching, it's not something we're going to do in the next couple of months, but we probably will have our meeting and will be really oriented, we seem to have a lot of information. But it needs to be community-supported, so that we have a lot of input of what we're going to do. I think our neighboring towns, Chelsea and Ann Arbor, the dumbness. And you think that Dexter does interesting history and it should be.
Sure.
Yeah.
Justin?
Um, and, and, you know, just, just, the, the reason this was included as a, as a discussion item rather than a consideration item is, um, you know, that there, there currently isn't anything in the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, um, for this project. So this may be something to, to have as a discussion item, um, during city council goals and objectives as we, as we work on the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget.
We haven't gotten to that part, but we are aware of different grants that might be available and so I not sure, but I wasn't assuming that the city would take this on. We hope that they would install it and maybe give a little bit, but there are grants and of moving this community, I don't think it's a problem to have funds for it, so it's not like we'll wait for the city to do all of this.
I think what you put together is great. I don't see us not supporting this in some way. Do we have any concerns about what they've read or proposed?
Are you, did you want to do the state of Michigan historical markers or the historical glass signage?
Um, the, the glass, well, we're not a hundred percent sure it's going to be glass, but that's what we're heading for, not the historical markers.
Not the ones through the state?
Right, right.
And if I can clarify, Ray, um, in the, on page eighty-six for the motion that ACH passed, um, kind of more in the short term, ACH was looking, um, potentially to recommend more of the support toward the glass signage.
Okay.
As time goes on, you know, if we want to revisit the state historical markers, um, that could be something that we could tackle again in the future, but I think ACH was more looking for, um, supporting the glass versus the state.
It's there, when we start setting up, uh, maybe I can, um, I'll talk to Sean, there might be people in the community, different organizations. Is there anybody in city council, it'd probably be a meeting in March, it will be a whole day workshop, is there anybody that might consider being on that committee?
I'm sure we can find a couple of representatives.
Okay. Just a question, is it the whole day during the week or?
It'll be a Saturday.
Okay, because.
People work.
Right, that's, yeah, and I'm willing to consider it as the newly appointed ex-ficio to ACH and also a former ACH member, it's definitely, you know, it's something that I'm interested in, invested in.
And Sanam, I will call you to, to do that. So.
Thank you.
I'm sure those are where to find me.
Yeah.
We have a lot of people that'd be interested, I think, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just throw in that I think that when we look and talk, when we look at people and talk to them who have written our book over the last year, by Centennial Book, there's so many little stories in there and people love them and, and, and you have to buy a book, right, they're hard to do it. Well, some of those, and maybe some different stories might come out on these signs that would, you know, really bring our history into today in a way that. our history into today in a way that we can't accomplish. So it's a, it's, it's a wonderful way for us to do that.
We've gone to different communities and read their signs and um, looked at their locations. And a lot of them just has tons of facts, and after the third sentence, you just keep going. So we want to draw people in, because we have a, a wonderful community. And people now, like Josh, are talking about the Old Wood and Row, they didn't know what that was. So, you know, we're trying to build history to, to show people.
What? Just one last thing, and I don't mean to talk about myself, but I want you to know how committed I am to this, since we're still getting to know each other. Um, I intentionally bought a house in the old village. It's eighteen-something, and I would love to talk to the Historical Society to see if you know more about it, because I haven't been able to find anything. I also have an American history minor from college, so I'm very interested in this.
Right, we have a genealogies that people come with their houses and really research it. He doesn't give up.
Great, I would love it. I would, I, I live on Dover between Fourth and Fifth. I've been told eighteen-eighties, eighteen-nineties, no idea.
Right, right, she will find it.
Great, perfect, looking forward to it.
Sanam?
Yeah, just if I may uh, make a comment. Um, so when the council made the resolution about the, the state of Michigan historical signs, um, the Arts and Culture Committee and the Historical Society had already been working on the proposal for the glass signage. Um, and so we, we started talking a little bit about how the, what do we bring to the council in terms of the vision for both of those things. Um, they are different, right? The, the state of Michigan uh, markers are on specific sites, they have to be approved by the state. There's a lot um, of different um, steps that is more official in that sense that goes into that. It has to be city-owned, so um, while it can be um, privately owned, but then the private owner has to do it themselves, but it has to be city-owned. And the state of Michigan does a lot on the language that goes into those green boards. Um, and for us as the council to do it, the um, financial aspect is fully on us to decide. So um, that's why that's sort of like we, when we made that motion um, at ACH, was to look at that in the long term and be able to plan it long term, because we do have some sites in the city of Dexter that would be fantastic to have those available or those on it, right? Um, but meanwhile, and this is a very different um, kind of sign. It's uh, the ones that I have when I walk around um, and see, um, especially in Ann Arbor. I love the fact that there are pictures that you can see the old, and then through the glass, you can see the new and the current, right? Um, and some information on it, some can be very, you know, paragraphs, but um, some are really fun to look at. And um, that's, that's to me, Dexter can benefit from both. It will be fantastic to have both. This one, you're working on some funding. Um, so in short term, for us, it would be easier to, to look to potentially, in my opinion, um, support this in collaboration with the Historical Society, and then think long term for the um, for the state of Michigan ones.
Right?
What side are we looking at for the state of Michigan versus the other ones? Is there a specific building?
Um, I think the specific ones we were really looking at that I was able to kind of decipher was like uh, thirty-five fifteen, I think it would be old enough to probably meet some of those requirements. Um, eighty-fifty main is old enough to probably meet those requirements, and.
Ash, can you talk about these and not addresses, just so we, if anybody here is listening, we know what you're, we're talking about.
Uh, so eighty-fifty main is the old Hilton Hudson.
Thank you.
Uh, thirty-five fifteen, City Hall, where we currently sit, uh, at Monument Park.
And those would be, those are the ones you're aiming for Michigan?
Those ones, I think, would be applicable to the state, but we would apply for it, and so they could, they could always turn those down. Uh, but those, I think, would be the ones that, in my initial research, would probably meet um, a chunk of the criteria or most of the criteria to apply for those.
Okay, so city-owned properties, yeah, so there's.
All right, let's.
I mean, there could be others that, that, there could be others that qualify or that would, if somebody were to apply, but we're talking about our own, the stuff we.
Right, it's something that state's gonna have to appreciate, because they're gonna be writing the material, I'm assuming. So they got some kind of guideline, they want some kind of continuity from all of their historical signs. But they don't mean, we gotta have a. I mean, you see what I'm saying? Are we gonna have like Dexter Historical and State Historical or?
I think the idea is to promote our history. How will we, how will we decide to do it? These are all steps towards that.
Well, you know how I love giving all your authority to other people, so. It's one of my favorite things.
Well, we, we will definitely plan for it as part of our goal setting for our next budget, which starts July one. And we will make sure that we have at least two people ready for whatever date you set in March.
Okay.
Don't do it on March twenty-second, I got a goal-setting session planned that day.
Okay.
Unless it's in the afternoon, but um, but I think it's great, Bev, what you guys, what everybody brought forward. I think it, it's a step in the right direction and, and uh, appreciate it, appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Okay, new business item M2, consideration of amendments to the Dexter Town Center condominium documents. Page one oh five of the packet.
Do you need a motion to discuss this?
I would like to get a motion on the table, if you could, there's a subject, a suggested motion. On page one oh six. You'll, you'll move the?
I will.
Okay, that's moved to approve, I'm gonna assume?
It is.
Okay, subject to the three conditions listed on page one oh six?
One oh six, yes.
A second.
Seconded by Alda, is that, did I do that? Get that right, Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Turn it over to you to uh, give us a brief update on what we're approving.
I'll make it very, very brief with the um, and if there's any questions that you've got to delve into this a little bit more. Sharon Ratch, Ratchke from Dexter Schools is here to provide any details you need. Basically, the crux is the school system purchased the Dexter Wellness Center. Um, excuse me, there are some legal requirements regarding the way schools fund uh, improvements to their property that they cannot be part of a condominium. Currently, Dexter Town Center is a condominium of three different parcels, and everybody shares the maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. These amendments um, um, will ultimately remove unit three, which is the DTC building three, from the Dexter Town Center condominium. Um, so that the schools all within the law. Um, and then there are some amendments to the Dexter um, uh, DTC building three condominium that come in as your next item, uh, but that's the crux of both of them. Additionally, the um, amendment is needed to comply with um, zoning compliance, uh, permit requirements regarding unit two. Those boundaries need to expand um, because of a um, improvements adjacent to the building, that patio area, for example, um, and to adjust unit boundaries for changes to common elements for schools' future ownership. Um, all of the conditions are the same, but um, I did have a conversation with Sharon this morning and verified it with the city attorney, Scott Signoff, who is online, if you have any questions regarding technical um, uh, condominium law. Um, the, uh, condition B um, can be uh, removed or eliminated, so it's two in your motion.
So, so we're approving the third amendment first, right?
You're approving the third, uh, this is for, you're doing the third amendment to done master D, oh my gosh. It's, this motion is for both third and for fourth, because they work together.
Okay.
I thought for a moment there, I didn't put the flat.
No, no, they're both here, I just, but, but, so, and so just tell me the, the third amendment does what? Versus the fourth?
Scott, can you help with this one?
Yeah, um, this is Scott Signoff, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I am an attorney at Dykema, um, I do a lot of condo work, and uh, Michelle asked me to help out here. Um, I'm not sure why they did this in two amendments, but from the city's standpoint, it really doesn't affect them. The um, third amendment changes the percentage of values and has units one through three, but you really need to follow all the way through to the fourth amendment, which goes on to combine, and now we just have the two units, one is for the school, and then there's the other one. And then they uh, aggregate the percentages of value there. It's kind of a technical condo issue thing, but I've looked at these carefully and had discussions with Michelle and with the developer and their attorney, and um, I don't see any issues or risk for the city with this, so.
Okay, so, so just in the fourth amendment, for my own knowledge, unit one is considered the schools?
Um, yeah, Michelle, that's the ninety-three percent unit, that's the schools, right?
That's the, that's the schools.
Yes.
And unit two is then?
Is currently.
The original pharmacy building?
Yes.
No, unit two is where the senior center is going.
Right.
DTC three condominium was unit.
Was it a three?
It was unit three.
Okay, so you just, okay.
You can, you can see it on page one thirty-one of the packet.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions then? Seeing none, please call the vote to approve the amendments.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Farrow? All Day?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
You?
Yes, motion carries. Now we'll go to the, the, new business item M3, which is consideration of the amendments to the Dexter Town Center three condominium documents. Are you gonna get a similar motion? The um, sample motion is on page.
One thirty.
One thirty-three.
I move. I move to approve.
Thank you, Sanam.
A second.
Thank you all for seconding. Okay. Michelle, anything to add?
No.
Any questions by council? And I'm assuming units five, six, seven, eight, or nine are internal to that building?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, seeing no questions, please call the vote.
No?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Farrow?
Yes.
All Day?
Yes.
You?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
It's been a busy year for you, Sharon, good job.
Been a very, very.
Good night. Thank you for attending, Scott.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're down to item, new business item M4, which is a design proposal from OHM Advisors for the summer twenty-twenty-five road program for an amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand. Joe?
Um, we, we, the proposal from OHM for twenty-twenty-five road program, design engineering, about that can exceed sixty-three thousand dollars.
Motion by Summer Farrow?
Second.
Second by Tell, thank you, Ray. Any discussion on that proposal? Please call the vote to approve.
All Day?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yep, it's okay.
Um, Tell?
Yes.
Semi Farrow?
Yes.
You?
Yes, motion carries four zero. Wow, not at the table at the time. Uh, new business item M5 is consideration of a design proposal from OHM Advisors for the summer twenty-twenty-six Main Street Mill and Overlay Project for an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand.
This the one from uh, Dexter Chelsea to Baker?
This is from Mill Creek to Baker Road, yes. Yep, from the bridge on.
This for OHM Construction Design?
For design, yep, I'll move it. Okay, motion by Tell?
Second.
Second by Joe, so, thank you. Any discussion on this topic, or do you want?
Yeah, so, so I think there's um, two questions that, that came up um, during uh, the road committee meeting that I, I wanted to bring up here. Um, the first being whether there was any, whether council wanted to discuss or provide any input at this point on the crossing, the, the pedestrian crossing at uh, Main Street and Alpine in front of uh, the Riverview Cafe uh, building. We have had, I, I've, I've had at least one resident recently reach out um, asking that something happened with that crossing. Um, during the meeting, um, it was suggested that uh, uh, maybe it be removed. Um, an alternative could be the installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Um, something, so, so the, the question is, do, do we want to do nothing with it? Which is a valid option. Um, two is we could remove it. Um, uh, but the next closest uh, pedestrian crossing is at Broad Street. Or three, uh, make some sort of improvement to it, which um, could include, but may not necessarily be limited to uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacons.
What?
Just my initial thoughts about that. I know we've had, you, you said we've had, you had one resident bring that up recently, but that's, this has been brought up multiple times. And as someone who has crossed there, I, it, it's not the greatest. I hesitate to make any, to, to think it's wise to make any changes or spend any money on this while the roundabout is pending. Um, the roundabout?
Oh.
Just to see how that affects traffic? I mean, if anything, I'd say, take it out, but that's gonna cost us money, right?
Uh, I mean, I, I, yeah, I, I mean, we're, we're, we're milling it, milling and filling.
Okay, well then, then maybe we, then maybe I would, maybe it makes sense to take it out until we know what the roundabout is gonna do to affect that traffic. And then at that point, like, take it out with the intention of reevaluating it and possibly putting it back in as is, if the roundabout sort of slows traffic the way that the county is intentioning, and, and, yes, the county thinks is gonna happen, or putting in the rapid flashing beacon at that point if it's not any better. But I don't want to spend money on a rapid flashing beacon right now, when we've got that huge change coming not too long down the road.
So, so the, the, the challenge is um, we're, we're, we're doing a project out there, or well, we're, we're proposed to do a project out there in, in twenty-twenty-six, um, which will be a significant disturbance to, to Main Street. So I, I think whatever we're gonna do, i- i- if, if we want to do anything, um, it would be the right time to do it. Or it waits until the next time we're back through there to, to do something. So if, if we, if we pull the crosswalk out and want to put it back in, we're shutting down Main Street.
Okay, no, I see what you're saying now. I, so when you're saying there's no cost, it's not be, it's because it's part of another, okay, it's part of this project and not because, okay.
Well, the, 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 the cost remove in the grand scheme of things would be nominal.
But if we had to put, if we put in the rapid flashing beacon later, it would be another disturbance of traffic. Okay, so I guess I'm not for that.
No, that's what you, well.
The rapid flashing beacon isn't gonna disturb traffic.
So we could put that in without putting?
Those are in the sidewalk things.
Okay.
But, uh, so I guess, quick, quick question for Marcus is um, ca- ca- can, can those be installed without shutting down Main Street?
Pretty much, yeah, you would, you would take a lane under flight control, and they're, or, you know, grow on the foundation. You just have to look at that as part of, make sure that there's a location that it can fit in the right spot.
And, and so that would be, sorry.
Yeah, wow.
Thank you. So that would be part of what you would need to evaluate now in terms of the location. And then also can, do you have an estimate of how long that one lane would need to be closed in order to put that? do you have an estimate of how long that one lane would need to be closed in order to put that in later?
A few hours.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be, so what, sort of our game plan here, the reason this is for you tonight, even though this is next season uh construction schedule, is because of the permitting process through M dot. So this project has the smaller money that was talked about earlier, which is federal money administered through M dot lots and some kind. Part of the requirement of using those funds is to get historic and environmental clearances. Those take time, but what's most critical for us, um and the reason we're here tonight is to uh get that ball rolling. Uh, we did have in our scope, um we anticipated bringing called preliminary plans back in front of council for feedback. Um, so we can, as part of that preliminary design, kind of bet out what those options might be um for the crosswalk and anything else with a few other things that were mentioned at the meeting as well. So we intended to, any feedback we get tonight is great. Will just get us um a more, I guess, directed um, a minute for you to look at in the next couple of months. Uh, but a decision certainly doesn't need to be made immediately, but we have time to um make that decision as well, leaving out the environmental expenses to.
Ray?
May I ask what the concern is with the crosswalk? Nobody pays attention to it, nobody uses it.
That's not true.
I'm asking what the concern is.
It depends who you're asking.
Huh?
It depends who you're asking. I don't know, I don't know, I'm supposed to answer that question.
So so the 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 there there is a a lot of vehicular traffic that goes down Main Street. There, I think there's also a lot of pedestrian interest in in that crosswalk. And there are, is the potential for those two things to come into conflict.
Look, we have a high.
Based on what?
We have a high number of people, yes, but we have a high number of people that wanna cross Main Street. And they don't, and they don't go up to the corner abroad.
No, hell no, I see him run across.
Whether whether there's a, whether there's a crosswalk there or not, they're gonna cross because it's convenient to cross.
Oh, yeah.
If we should, if we're gonna talk about anything, we should be talking about enhancing it, not removing it.
Well, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around here.
And 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 it doesn't make any sense to remove it and then put it back. That would cost twice as much as the rapid flashing beacon. I mean, it's it's hard to put that in, they have, I mean.
Too.
Well, I.
You rip it out, yeah, you rip out the project, put it back, you know, we.
So that that doesn't make any sense.
I don't disagree with any of that, and that's why I brought it up, cuz I wanted to make sure we look through all aspects of it. Um, and yeah, I mean, I don't wanna spend more money on this than we need to, but if leaving it as is, you're right, it does depend on who you ask. And some people are, i- i- anyway, yes, agree. Done.
Joe? I don't, I mean, sure, opinions vary, but I think there's quite a few people who said that that crosswalk is probably one of the more dangerous crosswalks that we have in the city. It's difficult to see people when they're on the River View side and they're going to cross. And frankly, cars blow through that crosswalk even though they're supposed to stop regularly, even though that's state law that they're supposed to stop. I mean, it's the one crosswalk we can point to where we actually had a fatal. So, I mean, uh, we don't have a lot of data to go on, but we do have one data point. I think, and I don't wanna say what Dan was saying, I know Dan expressed a lot of concern about that crosswalk. Um, and I agree, if you take it out, we already have people that are crossing between that crosswalk and Broad Street. I mean, it happens all the time. If we were gonna do some kind of enforcement as far as traffic enforcement goes, they should start making tickets for people that cross between those two crosswalks. Because, I mean, the only excuse was, I didn't wanna walk down to the corner, and it happens all the time. It's incredibly dangerous, it's amazing nobody's gotten hit because they walk out behind cars all the time. And it's obviously one of the most busy roads in the city. So, I mean, I think we either need to do something to make it better, make it more visible. You know, this is a proposal. Or we need to do something else, because it's just we're just waiting for another person to get hurt there. It's just, we've had way too many near hits. Like I said, I I personally think we should enhance it, not remove it. If if you're if you're gonna make pedestrians a primary choice, removing it doesn't help. Just saying.
It works. I suppose you could put an island out there. And nobody's gonna be able to make a lot.
If you don't want that.
Well, everybody done want to know that.
The rapid flashing beacon would help a lot. I mean, tho- those those that are so concerned about it shouldn't use it.
What's that?
The location. I mean, I mean, it's not that far to go to the light, but it, but I mean, but there are people that use that all the time. I mean, they have.
I crawl there all the time.
Coming, yeah, coming from West Ridge, driving, I see people using that all the time.
Oh, yeah.
So. And and and, you know, we we may, we may end up with a crosswalk down by the roundabout. Okay, al- also, that that won't have any signal or anything either. But that's that's part of the the roundabout design, just like over by the ones at Baker and and Dan Hoy.
Is there a a a flasher at the Dairy Queen in Monument Park one?
Nope. Nope.
Just more visible, more awareness, more signage?
It's buffered, it's it's a psychological buffer.
Oh, it's got that thing, yeah.
Traffic tends to slow on the at the at midnight. Um, you have less open area, you're coming in from the west. I mean, in the town, it's wider and so the traffic tends to just flow faster, but for some reason, when you get down from Dairy Queen, people are expecting that people are moving across the intersection. If I could, the D D A was kind of very strategic planning, when we looked at, um, it's what they call the opportunities now. And this, the crosswalk at um at Alpine on Main Street is one of the ones that they, by then, by what they don't recall off the top of their head was if they are looking um as part of that, do we pass it with a rapid flashing beacon or not, that I think is accurate. They haven't finalized the entry yet, but I think we're back to that now, I think.
Well, let's let's just keep in mind here for a second that residents and D D As don't just pick the treatment. It's usually based upon a recommendation by a traffic engineer over what would improve the crossing. Okay, we just, the the last M dot project we did, we just argued over whether we should put in a crosswalk at Forest without any protection over the busiest stretch of roadway in the whole town, and everybody was in euphoria over doing it. Okay, so to to talk about taking one out on the next project seems completely a hundred and eighty degree difference to me. The cost of a rapid flashing beacon, which we now have, what, four or five throughout town, plus one in the, on shield that the county put in, people understand what those do and what they mean and how to and how to operate them. So I mean, I I totally think enhancing is better than removing. As a part-time traffic guy. Why?
I I was not suggesting taking it out permanently. I was just trying to figure out the best budgetary way to wait until the roundabout to see, I I.
Well, this this doesn't, this is the other, this doesn't have to be tied to the M dot thing.
Well, we can put it in right now.
This doesn't have to be, this does not have to happen as part of the main street project. It's totally coincidence that it's in the area that we're gonna do the the money for. If we did it in three years, it, I mean. You could do it next year if you felt that strongly that we need to make it safer.
Yeah, you could do it tomorrow, you have the money.
It's a few hours of inconvenience for a, somebody to drill a hole, and you obviously gotta figure out where to do it. There are trees on both sides of that in and up that make it difficult cuz you gotta, right? And the push button has to be so, you know, certain proximity to the crosswalk. Those challenges need to be looked at, but this could be done anytime, whether or not it's part of this project. It, that's just, it doesn't have to be.
It felt like a convenient time to talk about it, though.
I know. But the goal is to get, right? We we always get bogged down on the the smallest item on a bigger thing.
Sorry.
Is our, is our.
That's not what I meant to do.
We have that, okay, we have that.
I, I, well, to 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 be fair. To 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 be fair, while you're, it it, you're not the only, like, the 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 there were opinions on it, so. Um, Marcus, you have the feedback you you need?
I do.
Okay. Um.
Several.
Well, we're gonna see a drawing of all the improvements. I mean, if that's what he wants to do and that's what the authorization.
Yep.
Well, if you wanna make downtown walkability, you gotta protect the project.
You do.
It's, now, Grandma and Grandpa don't wanna cross the sidewalk, and they wanna shoot across to the pub from the hardware, which I've seen a million times, and I mean moms with kids.
Yeah, we're never gonna stop them, though, right?
Oh, I, I know.
I mean, people choose to cross wherever they wanna cross. People are in a shorter hurry.
The 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 other, the this, this isn't the second item that I was gonna bring up, but just just as a, as an F Y I. Um, we are looking into uh lighting attachments for our existing rectangular rapid flashing beacons um to try and illuminate the crosswalks. Um, so these would just be, you know, mounted to the existing rectangular rapid flashing beacons with lights pointed into the the intersect, into the crosswalk intersection um in an effort to to get them illuminated, so pedestrians are even more visible. Um, there 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 are some locations where um lighting is a challenge. Um, like a- at the new uh Baker Road cro- uh pedestrian crosswalk. Um, the the closest overhead illumination is a a good distance away, and so um we have had a complaint that uh or more than one complaint that that crosswalk intersection is is not well lit.
At Forest?
At Forest.
If it's a crosswalk, it should be safe to cross there. Or else you're putting yourself at liability. We're gonna put in a crosswalk, but we're gonna lay the crap.
Um, but the the second item I I did wanna bring up was um to train in get some some feedback from council on the um county's request regarding um the roundabout project. So as council's aware, uh the county applied for um C Mac grant funding um to help fund the roundabout project at Dexter Chelsea Road, along with the right-hand turn lane going out onto um Dexter Pinkney Road. As a part of that application, they had included the city Main Street and Dexter Arbor Road corridor uh to couldn't convert our um streetlights over to their system um with the 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 traffic lights. Um, the the benefit to the city is that um essentially we we would have new um traffic light, a a new traffic light system that we wouldn't have to send someone on site to to manip- manipulate the the timings. Um, what wasn't expected is that the the federal government um has changed the A D A standards uh since that application was submitted. So that now all of these cities uh intersections that that have um pedestrian signalization um are or are set to be out of compliance with with A D A um from a level landing and signalization, pedestrian signalization standpoint. Um, for example, the the location of of a push button, I believe it's on Dan Hoy, is in is it in the middle of of a grassy area, which is out of compliance. Um, so the county came back to us and said, well, we didn't include this in our application. So city, we would like you to contribute towards this project uh to help fund the additional costs to bring these intersections up to compliance. The and and the the numbers were included in the transportation asset management plan um that was that was approved. Um, but that doesn't lock us into any contribution. I wanted to get city council's feedback on whether that's something that we want to participate in, not participate in, or uh provide additional feedback to the county. For the three intersections that are not Main Street, which is, or is not Main and Broad, um it's Baker Road, Meadowview and Dan Hoy.
Those are the three, alright.
Though that estimated construction cost is two hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
Our cost for A D A or?
Is 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 what there, is what the county has asked.
From us.
From us.
How much is their grant?
I think it's one point five million. Yeah.
But again, that's not this item.
That's the, that is, that's that's not this item, but it is related in that um the cost to bring Main and and Broad Street up to uh current standards is included in the estimated construction cost for for Main Street as included in in the TAM. And this design would include bringing up Main Street to 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 compliance.
Bringing in one intersection.
That one intersection up to compliance.
So that's what we're voting on here.
Correct.
The other question is a different question.
It is.
Not part of this motion.
I I I meant to bring it up during during the TAM discussion, but.
Well, we bring that back as a different item next meeting.
Yeah.
Please.
Okay.
So it could be not tied to everything.
Okay.
Yeah, we're in the uh construction.
Well, I mean, I mean, it's not, just, then you can write down all these things, one and a half million, two sixty-six.
Mm-hmm.
You have a little drawing, better description. Please. I'm understanding that we are updating Broad and Main as part of this.
Correct.
I think we need to understand what that looks like and whether that means there's not gonna be bricks at the ramps, and it's gonna be concrete, and, you know, there's some changes potentially to what our downtown looks like, but he's gonna hurry up and draw so we can tell him whether we like it or not.
Correct.
Let's we, let's get started on that, and then we can talk about the other, up next meeting.
Yeah.
Questions on the proposal from O H M for Main Street from Mill Creek to Baker Road? Please call the vote.
Tal?
Yes.
Semi Farrow?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
All Day?
Yes.
Yo.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Marcus. Um, new business item, M six is discussion of master plan annexation language. Page one ninety-three of the packet, one ninety-four, one ninety-six. So we saw a draft of the language. I'm not sure how many council members provided comments. Joe, I know you did, you copied me on that when you did it. But there's some proposed changes in red, right? Michelle?
Yes.
You added words in blue that are are your feedback?
Yeah, so the red are the comments that I received. Um, blue are mine. If um if it was red initially, it is now blue and underlined. If it was um, um, and so um, not all of the red comments are now blue, but some of them are um. Some of the things that are suggested, I got some comments on, I just need to know how you would like to structure this discussion so that it continues to move you forward. Let me ask this real quick. Go ahead.
What else? So so the the red that's there is is suggested changes, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then tell me what's the blue underlined is?
Blue underlined, like on page two, I'm sorry.
Like on like number three, yeah, like number three.
Three. Um, I believe those were actually red to begin with, and the blue meaning, yes, I agree with these, it can work. Um, if you go back to one, I did not cut those out, but I provided commentary on them. Um, because the term, in cases where annexation is not possible, um, you wouldn't call those annexations. If you were extending water and sewer outside your boundaries, you're not doing it through an annexation unless there's a transfer of property. Does that make sense to y'all? Does that make sense to y'all? It, it's, I, I double, I verified it with the city attorney.
We extended water and sewer to the license, four twenty-five, and we don't have an agreement.
I don't know what you did as far as an agreement back then. Um, uh.
That's called BS before seven o'clock.
Okay, so. If a four twenty-five was done then. I can't address that, I can tell you now, this thing won't allow. You can extend water and sewer through interlocal agreements, um, but you wouldn't be using a four twenty-five. So, if, um, uh, under an annexation policy, you wouldn't need number one anymore. And I go into more explanation about that when we get to number six. Um, excuse me, if you want to. A question that you need to determine, um, is, do you wanna do proactive? Planning outside your boundaries. That doesn't necessarily mean annexation. Or do you want to continue a more passive approach? Where somebody brings you a request. There are pros and cons both ways. Um, if you want to proactively plan for the properties outside your boundaries, you can do that. Planning an enabling act that allows you to do that. Doesn't mean those properties are coming in, doesn't mean they'll ever come in. But by planning them, for whatever use you want in the future. Helps if somebody does decide they wanna ask for an annexation. And you don't then have to amend your master plan in order to zone that property. You've, you've eliminated an extra step in the process. And if you look at page. Three of the memo. I've kinda given you a graphic to show what I was talking about for a proactive planning approach. Um, otherwise, we do what you've done before, we just work on the language within. That you currently have with your, um, with your master plan. So if you start again on page one with that first paragraph. Um, instead of it saying from time to time, and under mutual agreement between the city and adjacent townships. You're saying with adjacent landlords. That you're going to, um, uh, potentially expand the boundaries. Um. And then the second sentence would be, those, if you're talking about annexation. Um, you would only extend the boundaries if that limit was coming in based on a request. If you wanted to keep that particular paragraph in, I would take the last sentence out. You wouldn't, you don't need it, or you take the language in red out. Um, because if you're talking, yeah, talking about annexation. Property has to be transferred.
Michelle, within the overall context of the master plan that we're doing, when does this need to be reconciled?
Soon, rather than later, because we're planning to have this done.
Pick a date, please.
The next meeting.
It needs to be resolved by the next meeting? Or what?
It, it, it has the potential to, to slow down or delay the ability for this to be completed by June, by June thirty.
Okay, so, so can we do a workshop at six o'clock before the next meeting on this topic? I mean, I, I think you're asking, you're asking questions that are not in here. Like, do we wanna be proactively planning, or are we sitting back? Okay, that was a question I heard you weave into this discussion. Well, I know, but it's not at the top. Like, if that's an overarching question, that, that, that seems like a bigger picture thing, that frames the rest of it.
It, it can, correct.
Depending on how you want.
The, I took this in the order of the questions currently in your plan and the comments that were made. Um, I didn't. I know what you're saying, I agree with you, I'm not.
I mean, we have to follow whatever the laws are regarding annexation, regardless of what we put into their master plan.
Absolutely.
And if we choose to do a four twenty-five agreement, we have to follow the rules of that.
Absolutely.
Also.
Right.
So we don't have to explain all that to each other in the master plan.
I'm making sure I'm understanding what you mean.
We don't have to rewrite what's already written somewhere else in the master plan. If we wanna, if we wanna have a comment about the use of a development agreement.
Correct.
It's okay.
Correct.
Okay. Why?
As much as I don't love having workshops before these meetings. Uh, because of time constraints and work and all that, I don't feel like I'm in a position to discuss this enough right now at this time. Of the evening, um, to give staff the feedback that they need. In the time that they're asking for it. So, in other words, I'd be willing to have a workshop, I think it might be a good idea.
That's what I'm proposing. Can you set up a meeting for six o'clock? That's what, that's what I'd like to do, let's, let's. Everybody read through this, think about it. Figure out what, what language you like, what language you don't. You know, my, my, my biggest problem with the previous language. Is that it said we have to have mutual agreement in that, in the top very first sentence with the townships. And I don't think that that's true. I think it's more true with the word landowners. That's my opinion, and, and you don't have to agree with that, but that's, that's a significant change, I think, but a meaningful one. So now.
I actually agree with that, because landowner means it can also be the city next, you know, the municipality next door.
It could be, yeah.
Yes, so I think it's more encompassing and actually. Talks about a lot more than just. Municipality next door.
If I could ask one thing, and I don't expect an answer, but something for you to consider. I, I know that it has been said, I don't remember exactly who. And the gist I got from some of the, the comments that were provided was. Um, four twenty-five agreements aren't your first choice. And if they aren't. Think about. Why you would even put them in, if you really don't want to do four twenty-fives as part of an annexation. It, it doesn't even have to be in here, and that's where the suggestion for planning outside your boundaries. Comes into the picture, because then you're, you're, you're letting your surrounding communities know. Exactly, this is what you'd like. You're not saying you're not gonna do four twenty-five, but if you really don't want to do them.
Again, again. You're proposing high-level questions.
No.
That are different than the exercise, which is you wanted feedback on the current language.
Correct.
Alright, so, if it could, please reserve the room for six o'clock on the twenty-seventh for that.
We will.
Thank you. Okay, last new business item, discussion of process to fill city council vacancy. And I'd like to, if I could, get a motion to accept. Uh, Zach's resignation.
So I make a motion to accept the resignation of, uh, Zach Michael.
To officially. Yeah, so we're officially vacating.
City Council.
All second.
Okay, motion by Tel, second by Hubbard. Is there anybody in discussion on that? That at least puts it in the minutes of, on when we did it, and lets everybody go, go search and find it. Okay, please call the vote to do that.
All day?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, Justin did a nice job of laying out. The rules regarding the, from, from the charter, as well as, um, our council rules. And, um, I believe that. You wanna advertise the position starting tomorrow, is that correct?
That's the plan.
We have to decide by the next second. All your applications should be in by next meeting. Is that what I'm reading here?
Um. Uh, so, so we, we.
Doesn't necessarily have to do that.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we, we, we set the, the due date for applications, and then at the next meeting. After the, we decide the applications are due, um, is when they'll, they'll be presented.
The hard, the hard part is we meet every two weeks, but, you know, you wanna give people a chance to, to learn about it.
Yeah, what, 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 what are we considering adequate notification in a month, two weeks, ten days? I mean, you can go the.
Ten days until the next packet goes out.
Mm-hmm.
You can, you know, whatever the state requires you to post, you could use that as some.
So, um, I, I, we, per the charter, we have six, sixty days to, to fill the vacancy from the time that the vacancy is created. Um, which was, uh, January seventh. Um, so ideally, we will have an appointment made by the second meeting in February.
Yeah, we have three, we have three council meetings with which to do this.
I would think so.
A January meeting and the two February ones.
Well, the March, March tenth is the first.
From, but it's, it's, it's sixty days from, from essentially when he submitted his resignation, which he said is effective immediately.
Well, but you just said we voted on it, um, to make it efficient.
Yeah, can we count today?
I, 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 I think the appropriate date is January seventh.
Yeah, okay, alright, but that's not, that's a detail.
In the February, so let. Let me walk through this, though. It says, prepare adequate notification to the public regarding the open position. Newsletter, a newspaper, internet, other, whatever, being appropriate. If, the deadline for the next package is ten days from now. I mean, something came out on paper, I mean, I'm not even sure it could get this Thursday at some time, which is our official paper.
It, it likely wouldn't make it in, in this week's edition of the Sun Times, it would have to be next week.
So say it's the week after, so that misses the next meeting altogether. And I don't think it's probably unreasonable to say, I'll put it out there, it won't be the next meeting, it'll be the meeting after. Uh, uh, the first meeting in February. But then it says, the applicants will write a letter of intent to fill out the application, or, or fill out an application in accordance with the deadline. A copy of which will be provided to the council in the council packet. So that means a month from now, the first meeting in February, we would get. The letters.
Yep.
At the next council meeting, the mayor presiding as will announce all the applicants and provide copies of applications or letters of intent. At this meeting, that is the, the second meeting in February. City council will also establish the terms of a public interview process, reliable applicants by the George vote. So then we can set up an interview process.
Yeah, I know, the, the rules don't allow the six.
Then that goes out, and then essentially, we're out to the first meeting park. So, we cannot follow this procedure unless we decide that we need a very short notification. You know, unless we say, we're gonna say, anybody that wants to submit something, submit it, it's gotta be in by next Monday. But basically. I'm not a big fan of this process.
And, well, we could modify the process.
I will say, I. After having gone through the process, and I know you did as well. Um, it was. A waste of time, it was a waste of time, it was a waste of effort, there was, uh. I mean. From all appearances, the decision was breathing for day before we got to vote. So, to. Put somebody or advocates through this dog and pony show to get to a point where. You know, potentially they don't be voted on, um, it, as I said, if somebody went through it, it's not something I'm in favor of. We could go to number three, get the applications. There's no reason to have them in the council packet, and then have them again in the next council packet. Once they're in the council packet. And at that point, that gives you some of the time that you get the applications until the following meeting, to contact the people if you wanna talk to them. At the following meeting, we can skip right down to number six, and the mayor can make a nomination, just like we did for decades. In Bodine. It's not very difficult.
All we have to do is define the process we wanna follow, and then follow it. So if, if, if we don't want to do the. You know, a certain step, or wanna modify it, we can. That's what this is about, but we, we, you know, the thing we. Well, by the way, we had sixty days to do it last time, and it didn't happen, and we tried, I tried. Three times, we tried, but, uh, and we, and we ended in a very good spot. Okay, but, but there's, you know, there wasn't really a backlash or a punishment for not hitting the sixty-day thing, that's just what we have in our charter. Which we should strive to, to follow, and we, we wrote and approved it. In hindsight, maybe that there should have been, I think the intent of that was that we get it done quickly, but, you know, we've complicated it with. The process and allowing time for people to think about whether they wanna do it or not. But I, I think, I think Justin, you, you need to, let's, let's start with the notification tomorrow. And, you know, I, I, I think it's fair to say that we give them two weeks. So, I, I. They, I have them do, do back on the council, you know.
We, we, we could have them do back on. Uh, Tuesday, January twenty-eighth.
Why not the twenty-seventh?
Uh, well, so, so it, I mean, council pack goes out on the twenty-ninth, and it, it, it wouldn't be hard to. Compile, wha- whatever we receive, um, but.
But I mean, our meeting is, our next meeting is the twenty-seventh.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Oh, so, sorry, uh, um, if, if, it was.
I mean, what I'm getting at, we, we might as well bring back the names we have at the next meeting. So now.
Could, could we, um, have the due date be. Sunday twenty-sixth, and then twenty-seventh, we have a supplement with the names and.
Yeah, and what, what I would propose is that we, we take the rules that are here, and we strike the words at the next council meeting. And, and, and line four.
Yep.
I think you, you remove that, and that gives us a lot of flexibility to. Okay. And, and, and I also. I also think you amend number three to say we'll be provided to, to council in the council packet, or an amendment to the packet. Cause we do amendments all the time, everything comes, we open out regularly, get stuff on the table on Mondays.
Yeah, and, 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 and I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at the, at kind of the, the, the way the dates fall. And it's, it's not gonna hit the sun times until the twenty-third.
Right, but there's an or, there's a very important or there.
Yeah, and, and we, we would, we would put out for the email update, Facebook.
Sometimes it's out, or before they go to print.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And it's on the floor.
So, when's the due date to have your application in? That's gonna be the most important thing.
I think we have it be the next council meeting.
So, have it here by twenty-seven?
And then we can summarize them all.
Twenty-seventh at noon.
Sure.
Yeah.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
And then what is our adequate notification consist of, other than sun times, newsletter, email? This, uh, newsletter.
Yeah, we're, we're, we, we, we don't have a, a newsletter that, that's ready to go out and.
No, alright, but we do have a website. But you know, so, well, you didn't notify us, you only give us two weeks notice.
But I mean, you could put a notice up on the front door, right here.
That's correct.
Comes in, it could be right there, it could, could put it down. At the fire station, it could be at the library, I mean, there's, we used to do all that sort of stuff, and postings. You know, I, I don't have any problem. You know, I I don't have any problem with that, but I I think today we should, we should amend the rules. And amend number three and number four. What?
I would like to make a motion to amend those rules as we discussed, number three, to add at the end of the sentence or an amendment to the packet. And number four, to strike everything prior to the mayor or presiding officer will announce.
Motion by Hubbard?
I'm sorry.
Second by seven Pharaoh? Okay, got a motion on the table, Joe, comments?
I I don't know how everybody else feels. I understand the idea about doing the public interview process. I mean, I would like to take out the last sentence four and five, but if other people feel that that's valuable or they want to do that, I understand completely.
Well, you you could say for number five. If city council feels it is important to hold an interview. Council could schedule an interview with eligible applicants during one or more public meetings.
Well, you stood at the last one.
Well, that just says council will also establish the terms of a process. That's if we feel it's necessary.
Before the at this meeting.
Yeah, you could put it, yes.
I I'm I I wish I had seen that before I made the motion because I it doesn't make sense to take out at the first meeting and then leave in at this meeting, so.
You could change the second.
We could just change the second half forward to say city council will also establish terms of a public interview process as necessary.
That's fine.
And then get rid of five and completely.
Yep. That's amendment to your.
Yes.
It's a friendly amendment.
Yeah, a friendly amendment, should you wish to second that.
Well, you get no, there's a good there.
Me?
No.
You got it, okay? Good, okay.
Well, can you explain it to me?
You need me to?
I.
You got it, or?
Yeah, I I think it's sixty day limit, and you're right, you scheduled three meetings in here before the sixth, you can't do it. So I don't have, we you just give me applications, I look at them, and then we vote on them. You want to interview them, I don't care.
Well, that was my, that was always my contention, was that if we if we shared the applications. That people could always, you know, make, reach out and make contact with the person if they need to.
I would expect you to.
Yes, that was a friendly, same same two people. Okay, let's handle that, changing the process then. Is okay to call the vote on that?
I don't know if I can work with this.
Please call the vote on the process.
All day?
What, what?
And we're establishing a council process.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes.
What am I doing?
Thank you, motion carries. All right, so you're gonna you're gonna advertise tomorrow until the twenty-seventh, the three o'clock, or whatever.
You're gonna word it so your application ends again by the twenty-seventh.
The goal is that we'll be able to read all the names to everybody and pass those things out at the meeting on the twenty.
Perfect.
If it comes in at three oh five, we're still taking it.
The we need to have updated council rules at the next meeting inviting.
Yeah, good idea, Joe.
So, I mean, it's okay to proceed with the first ones that they haven't changed, but for the later parts of the process, they need.
Yep.
Right.
Okay, any more discussion on this? We are back around a non-arranged participation, item N. Would anyone like to speak this evening? Nobody online, okay. Council comments, Olivia, please lead us on.
Um, just want to say Happy New Year and hope everyone's holidays are good. I apologize for not being at the last couple meetings, but.
Yeah, we were talking about it.
I bet that's on the, that was on the agenda.
Well, you can see we don't follow the agenda.
Happy New Year to you. Joe?
I mean. No, no.
So now? Right?
Well, who is the two employees that are moving on? You gave their titles, but I don't know.
I I I so Debbie Nagle is is our new administrative assistant.
Up front.
Yeah, she was, she she worked at the the front desk and then.
That ugly girl.
I I think that's a good good description, and then Tim Preby. Our our new finance director on deck. I I don't know if you ever met him, Ray.
Yeah, one was going to do Maurice.
Yeah. Yep.
And what was his rationale? Better opportunity?
I I think it's bu- but better, talk about it away from the table.
Say again?
I think it's better to talk about it away from the table. Not 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 at a public meeting.
Oh. Kind of shy. All right.
Yep.
What?
Uh, let me just say, first of all, the only thing that really needs to go in the minutes is that I I'd want everyone to keep California in their thoughts. I have one of my oldest friends from middle school who is from around here. She very narrowly avoided losing her home because her husband stayed stayed way too late after the evacuation order to defend it, and everything's up in the air for her and her community, and I have another friend who is still in a danger zone, so there's a lot going on out there, and it's really, really tragic, and the people who've been affected by it, at least the one that I know directly can't even start to wrap their head around what's next.
Not mudslides, not really.
She could be anything, really, but.
Does anybody have any proposed agenda items to add or to delete?
How uh are the agents that are dead in the next meetings, are those that are pretty firm that we're expecting?
That's that's what we're looking at as of right now. And I'm not going to say that that's all, but.
No, no, I just, yeah, I'm. I'm impressed.
We're trying to.
I will seek a motion for adjournment at nine twenty.
Second.
By all day, second by what? All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.